Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to listen to you today. My name is Alexandra Oliver Davila, and this is my colleague, Mr. Tran, and we are both members of the Boston School Committee. For tonight's session, you can find the documents posted on the committee's webpage, which is bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee under the February 16th meeting link. And we will also post a link to the documents in the chat that we will be reviewing this evening. And the documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation this evening in Spanish, Arabic, Somali, and French. And after the interpreters introduce themselves, we will activate the interpretation icon, which is the globe at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon to select your language preference. In order to access this feature, you have to have updated your Zoom to the most recent. And you can do that by visiting support.zoom.us. And I'm going to now ask our Spanish interpreter to please introduce himself and provide Zoom instructions in Spanish.
Muy buenas noches, damas y caballeros. Bienvenido a la reunión virtual del Departamento de Educación de Boston. Mi nombre es Randolph Dominguez. Puedo ser su intérprete en el idioma español el día de hoy. Por favor, en orden de ustedes poder escuchar la conversación en el idioma español, deben ustedes de seleccionar en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Van a ver un globo terráqueo como una bolita del mundo. Tienen que pulsar allí, seleccionar su idioma, y entonces van a poder escuchar todo en el idioma español. Si no, pues si están utilizando un celular, van a pulsar los tres puntos en la parte superior derecha de su pantalla, y allí pueden entonces ustedes accesar su idioma. Si no tienen la versión de Zoom más presente, deben de tener la versión más reciente de Zoom para poder accesar la interpretación. Deben de ir a support.zoom.com y bajar la más reciente aplicación. Muchas gracias. Que tengan una muy buena tarde.
Thank you. And if I could ask our Arabic interpreter to please introduce themselves and provide Zoom instructions in Arabic?
Merhaban bi'kum. Ana Almatarjima Ghada Sadiq. Hoy se traduce con la reunión con el módulo de Boston. Y esperamos que se reunan con nosotros y se acerquen a esta reunión. Y si les gustó la traducción en la lengua árabe, pedirles que pulsen la campana de la piedra para que puedan escucharla en la lengua árabe. Si hay algún problema, por favor, pueden enviar mensajes para que sepamos cómo ayudarlos. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. And if I could ask our Somali interpreter to please introduce yourself and provide Zoom instructions in Somali?
Hello, salaam aleikum, aman ti wa salaam ya. Mashta'ma'asama'adu meish kuchu'te. Wa han rabayna edin shewa gharabte. Wa han suguni ma'adne'kulan ah'innan kulan nuh. And Boston Public Schools program eh'udan o ay khaban inayi wahi na'krahann lan. Marko wa han rabayna edin shewa mag'iga. Ta'adum haisan al dha'ah. Wa han rabayna edin turjuma gharabte. Qofki danayna inlu turjumo inu tabta. And she shadda meish edo ho se. Ha'kuya al qaridada kutsouran. Wa anakala ba'hadameh shabbe hesa Somali. Marka Somali hada tabitli wa ha'ku so ba'ha'ya. Qofku turjuma'ya o marak ta'atki English ha'ku b'edra isomali. Wa inu salaam edin kudun so de wehda. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if I could ask our French interpreter to please introduce yourself and provide Zoom instructions in French?
Yes. Salut. Je m'appelle Ma'ona Bellaoum. Je serai l'interprète français pour cette session des écoles publiques de Boston. S'il vous plaît, si vous avez besoin d'interprétation ou d'écouter la réunion en français, cliquez sur le globe en dessous de votre écran et choisissez la langue française. Merci. Si vous avez besoin d'aide, veuillez écrire par message sur le chat afin de vous aider à joindre la chaîne. Merci. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all, all of you, all of our interpreters for assisting us today. We will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. And I just want to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. We are here today because our duty as a school committee is to represent the vision and the values of our community. Today's community engagement session is just one of the many ways that we go about doing that. What we're not here to do this evening is to address current issues such as school reopening, policing, or other such matters. And if you would like to discuss those issues in the context of our five-year goals and guardrails, then this is the conversation for that. If you want to discuss those issues in the context of getting a resolution to a current issue, we have other avenues for that, including our regular committee meetings. But to help improve our present, we have to make a plan for the future. So before we start, we just want to say, in terms of ground rules, we just asked for people to, if you could speak one at a time, and if you can make sure, if you speak a lot, to possibly let others speak. And also that you can put your comments and questions in the chat, and those will be collected as an FAQ that we will share with all of our school committee colleagues. And at the end of the session, if you have more things to say, there will be a Google form where we are collecting feedback. And if you know other families, stakeholders who are not able to attend these sessions, please feel free to let them know that we are collecting this feedback in the Google document, and you can find that on our website. While BPS is making great strides, we know that there are always ways that we can improve. This spring, we engaged in extensive community outreach efforts to develop our current strategic plan. Since the completion of that plan, the school committee has selected two sets of measures from the strategic plan that we will monitor closely each month. From the strategic plan, we selected a set of priorities that represent the community's vision for what students should know and be able to do. We call these our goals. And from the strategic plan, we selected a set of non-negotiable community values that must be honored while we pursue the goals, and we call these our guardrails. We do this not to replace the strategic plan, but to heighten our focus on it, to increase transparency, and share accountability for student outcomes. Today, we're excited to share these goals and guardrails with you and to hear your feedback. So goals represent the community's highest need, highest leverage vision for what students should know and be able to do. The school committee selected goals that focus on: one, early literacy; two, achievement for English learners; three, achievement for students with disabilities; four, critical thinking with math, science, and literacy; and five, college and career readiness. Because the school committee that focuses on everything is the school committee that focuses on nothing, one of the hardest tasks has been to narrow it down to only five goal areas. But as we grow students' success in these areas, it will have significant impact on students' abilities to be successful elsewhere as well. Our guardrails represent the community's values and our non-negotiable expectations that must be honored in all of the school system's work. The school committee selected guardrails that focus on: one, student voice and family engagement; two, community partnerships; three, equity and opportunity gaps; four, diverse and effective staffing; and five, social, emotional, and physical supports. When these guardrails are honored, they help create the conditions for student success system-wide. Once these goals and guardrails are fully adopted as a school committee, we will redesign everything we do to monitor these priorities and focus our work around them. We will redesign what our meetings look like to focus more time on ensuring that the goals are met and the guardrails are honored. We will focus a greater percentage of our time each month on monitoring student growth to ensure we are moving in the right direction. We will evaluate the budget on its alignment with the goals and guardrails. We will evaluate superintendent based on accomplishment of goals and adherence to guardrails. The community's priority vision, our goals, and the community's prioritized values, our guardrails, will be at the center of everything we do. So with this information in mind, we're going to begin with our first question. Please remember that our intention is to create a space to hear from as many people as possible today. And for this reason, we'll ask people to keep their responses and comments to under two minutes to make space for other voices. And we have divided this conversation into three parts, which are 20 minutes each. And I will now pass it on to my colleague, Mr. Tran, to start us off with the first question.
Good evening. The first question that we have for you is: Which of the five goals is most important to you? And how can BPS best partner with families and communities to accomplish it? Of the five goal areas: early literacy, achievement for English learner, achievement for students with disabilities, critical thinking with math, science, and literacy, and career and college readiness. Which one most resonates for you and why? How can BPS do a better job of partnering with families and communities to accomplish this goal? Who will be the first one to share?
So while we're waiting for people to share, don't be shy. You can also write comments and questions in the chat or raise your hand, and we can have you ask your question or make your comment. I would say that we've had a number of sessions, and we did hear some comments from the public around where if these goals were separate from the strategic plan. And so we just want to make sure that people know that these come directly from the strategic plan. And we looked at, it was really hard to pick five goals. I think that is very challenging. And we really looked at the gamut of students from early literacy all the way through college and career readiness. And Mr. Tran, I don't know if you want to add anything about that?
I'm quite sure that we have covered everything. Thank you, though.
We had a session with students last week, I believe it was. And we heard a lot of feedback around the college and career readiness and students feeling that that was really critical, important, and they really supported that goal. And then we also heard that in our, in the guardrails piece from the students as well. But again, trying to look at the gamut of students, starting from early literacy all the way through college and career readiness. I think the other thing that we heard was that we were deviating from closing opportunity achievement gaps. And that is not what we are trying to do here. We are wedded to that. That's our goal. That's front and center. And we feel strongly that working on these, we will be able to close achievement gaps. And again, as I said, it's challenging to focus on five things. But part of what we will be doing is developing a self-evaluation of the school committee around these goals and really monitoring ourselves and really trying to design our meetings and agendas around focusing on these goals. Because as we said, the school committee that focuses on everything focuses on nothing. And I believe we have a hand up? Ms. Zip?
Yep. Thank you. Good evening. I will be addressing two, three, and four. My name is Alicia Zip. I live in Dorchester. And I'm on the board of the Friends of the Boston Schoolyards. And the Friends are committed to making sure that every child in Boston has access to outdoor education. I mean, again, we have seen the positive impact that comes with outdoor education. And with the BPS reopening plan in place, we are here to provide valuable outdoor teaching and learning opportunities to all our students, especially those who are in number two and number three. Now is the time. The COVID-19 pandemic proved that spending time learning, growing, and playing outdoors provides a number of benefits for our mental, emotional, and physical health. And that's why we are working to ensure that our youth have, are able to take advantage of their surroundings. Our students have been cooped up and online for months, and they are thirsting for authentic experiences in and around nature. And to achieve this goal, we are hoping that the committee and the superintendent will approve an outdoor teaching and learning coordinator who would be able to take these endeavors to the next level. We know that many of you are enthusiastic about outdoor education. And we ask that you do what it takes to bring nature to the city's children, especially those who have not had that opportunity, and encourage others to join with us. We might be able to secure some funding for the spring semester. But we really need to have this included in the budget for next year so that this is not a one-time thing that happens and then goes away. We have the support of the facilities department and educators in the schools, science teachers, and others. It's not just for science. And we just wanted to point out that only a few years ago, Boston was a national exemplar for green schoolyards and outdoor education during the time of the Boston Schoolyard Initiative, which lasted for 20 years. And we know, facts prove that children tend to be more creative, engaged in learning when they are outdoors. Outdoor learning efforts students in all academic subjects as well as social, emotional development, health, development of environmental consciousness, and stewardship. So I, and I would just say, we have an opportunity right now to address inequity issues in our community, re-access to safe, accessible, green spaces and outdoor learning by making sure that the existing green educational ecosystem, which was created by that school year initiative, is being used in an active and imaginative way at the very moment that is most needed and available for students. Without this outdoor coordinator for this educational need, it will be difficult to make that happen. So we are looking for your support for this coordinator. It's just a huge issue. I can't say that enough. Especially children, if you live in an apartment building and your parents don't want you to go outside, the streets are unsafe. The schoolyards are in excellent shape, have kept up this entire year. And we need to use them now. Thank you so much.
Thank you for sharing that. I think you have, you're spot on in terms of, you know, the, the benefits of being outside and of nature. We definitely, in our goals, sorry, in our guardrails, we have put in, I think where that fits is the social, emotional, and physical supports. And it's true, you are correct, that our students, you know, need, need more nature, need more green. I'm a huge believer in that. And I think part of also what we want to try to do in the superintendent's strategic plan, one of the, the goals is around activating partnerships. So I think it also fits there. But thank you so much for sharing that. And I think we had another hand up as well. Jasmani, I think it was? I don't know if I'm saying your name correctly. Apologize. Who else would like to share? Okay. So again, please feel free to write in the chat, and we will also be collecting the feedback in a Google Doc form. So we're going to move on to the, the next piece of our agenda, which is talking about our guardrails. And you'll see the slide is up here. So we would like to know which of the five guardrail areas is most important to you? And how can BPS best partner with families and communities to honor it? So again, of the five guardrail areas, which are: student voice and family engagement, community partnerships, equity and opportunity gaps, diverse and effective staffing, and social, emotional, and physical supports, which one most resonates for you and why? And how can we, as a district, do a better job of partnering with families and communities to honor this guardrail? So I'd like to ask, who would like to be the first to share? And feel free again to write in the chat or raise your hand. And Mr. Tran, I think that we can safely say that we had a lot of agreement on these from the school committee, not as, not as hard as the goals, because we wanted to focus on more than five goals. But as we said, the school committee that focuses on, everything focuses on nothing, the guardrails. I think people came up with very quickly in our retreat. And the number one, I think, thing everybody agreed with across the board, you know, was around authentic student voice and authentic family engagement. That was front and center. And then the equity and opportunity gaps, making sure that we focused on closing those gaps. And then we had a lot of discussion. I think you were definitely one of the champions around the staffing, the diverse and effective staffing, because I know you talk a lot about that. And then we wanted to make sure that we used our community partners and, you know, in all of the areas that we have so many great partnerships across the district, making sure that we use that expertise. And then the social, emotional, and physical supports. I think, again, you were a big champion of the staffing and the diversity. And I think you talked also about language.
Yes.
And there's a, there's a comment, a question about the guardrails. They're not ranked by most important and prioritized. They're all important to us, so they're not ranked by order of importance. But great question. Thank you for asking that. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Mr. Tran, on any of those that spoke to you when we were in our retreats?
Actually, all these guardrails are important. And I myself find it pretty hard to prioritize which one is more important and which one is not. I would say, I would agree with you that all five are equally important. And just to reflect back on the comment made by the last participant, I was a high school teacher quite a long time ago. And I do, I do agree with her that students do need to have outdoor teaching, outdoor learning, which is very much important to, to their growth and to their learning as well. So I appreciate the comment, and I, I will support the request when we meet again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. I didn't know that about you. All the time we spent together in school committee meetings, because we never get to have a conversation. Right. So that's interesting. I didn't know that about you. Little known fact. I think Ms. Zip has her hand up again? Okay, maybe not. So, okay. So moving on, I'm going to pass our last part of the agenda on to Mr. Tran for the last part of our listening session?
Yes. There are, there are three questions that we have for, for the community. And this is the, the, the one of the three. And for today's session, it is going to be the last question. So I do encourage people to speak up and give us your insight. So one way or another, we'll find a way to incorporate your, your suggestions, your advice into our work. Given what you have shared, what is one thing that you would be open to doing to support our students? How would you like to be involved in the success of BPS and our students? What is the one thing that you are willing to commit to that would support the success of our students in Boston Public School? Again, I'm encouraged, I'm encouraging everybody. Please give us your advice and suggestion. This is the time. Of course, this is not the only time, you know, there are, there are other ways to reach out to us, as mentioned by my colleague earlier in this session. But I would like to hear directly from all and anyone of you. Thank you. I see two hands. all and eight, and anyone of you. Thank you. I see two hands.
I'm sorry, are you hearing me now? This is Alicia again.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I got kicked out before. So that's why I didn't answer your question. So obviously, the Friends of the Boston Schoolyards are committed to supporting the success of our students by giving out the opportunity of outdoor education. On your previous question, I just wanted to say that I have been hoping for a long time that Madison Park would move into the 21st century and really offering training in green jobs and in the economy. It's going to be here, hopefully, when we move from the oil economy to the green economy. And I've never really seen that that is an emphasis over there. You know that places like Worcester, their, their schools, this kind of teaching, really, like, for instance, I think they've gone into auto mechanics. There's, there's very specific things that the children come out and they have a career that they go directly into. So in Boston, I, I think it would be really excellent if we could move to thinking about the green jobs that are going to need to be filled the 21st century and, and training our students for them.
Thank you for that point. I think that's really important and it's part of our college and career readiness. What we're hoping to look at is a number of things. And one of them is CTE certification. And I agree with you, the green economy is huge, obviously, for the future is one of the things we're looking. Mr. Tran, you wanted to say something?
I'm not, no, no, thank you. I, I don't have anything else to add to, given my stuff, you know, as well. I'm sorry, I've been sneezing and, but I'm, I'm following. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. I know that you have a cold, so I appreciate that you're doing this with me. Thank you so much. I, I feel terrible that you have a cold and you're doing this, but thank you.
Oh, that's fine.
So I think we have, Ms. Shakur has her hand up.
Yes. Hi, thank you so much. I appreciate that you are holding the, these community listening sessions. I'm here actually as one of the co-chairs for the Opportunity and Achievement Gaps Task Force. As I'm looking at this question, one thing I'm willing to commit to is really trying to push the district and, and to hold ourselves accountable to some of the policies that are already in place. I think there is a lot of revisiting of goals and guardrails that really are ultimately rehashing of things that are included in the opportunity and achievement gap policy that was drafted in 2016 and that's, that's going to be ratified, revised this year. There's also, as I understand, you know, the EL task force, there's the SPED PAC. I feel like there's a lot of policies that the district has embraced over the years, but that does not act to those repeatedly as, as its refreshing goal. So I would just urge you to add some language into these goals and guardrails that explicitly names the existing policies of the district that need to be enforced, so that it doesn't appear that this document is something new, but that this is just building on promises that has already made. The other thing I do want to call out is that in looking at the goals, where it talks explicitly about students with disabilities and English language learners, there's nothing that's calling out specifically the needs of Black students. And yet we know that in this climate, it is our nature and racial reckoning, that there is a focus on anti-racist practices, that we need to deal with anti-Black practices, as well as inherent biases, implicit biases. And so I think we need to call out the specific needs of Black students as one of the groups that the district will actually be focused on in trying to address some of these opportunity gaps that we know our young people are experiencing. So I guess that's just twofold. One, again, just like, let's call out the policies that are already standing, that the district has already voted to adopt. And let's, like, explicit in this document, that it's crosswalking the optimism together to say, you know, when you talk about the opportunity and achievement gaps, it should say in accordance with the 2016 policy. And when we talk about YELTS students, be in accordance with whatever policies are already in place. Too often, the district spends time putting new things in place without fully implementing. Thank you for.
Thank you for your comment and your suggestion. Well, as a matter of fact, you have already committed yourself to, to help us with your membership in one of our committee. I've heard the concerns regarding the lack of our include, inclusion of Black students in, in the, the goals. I, I myself think that all students are in fact covered in, in our roles. But I do take your, your suggestion and your advice with me. And I believe that there will be ways that among our, our colleagues will discuss that. Is there anything that you can add to that, Chairman Navila?
Thank you, Mr. Tran. No, I think you said it perfectly. We are, you know, using these listening sessions and we're going to take everyone's comments and bring them back to the committee to look at our, look at, you know, the goals again, look at the guardrails and see what are kind of the themes that came up across the community. So we definitely will obviously use that. So thank you for sharing that and for those points. Would anyone else like to share? So thank you so much for taking time to share with us tonight. And what our next steps are is we will bring all of, again, this information, not just from the listening sessions, but also from the Google Doc, where people are able to write down any additional thoughts or questions, et cetera. And we're going to bring those back to the next few school committee meetings. And then in April, we plan to use this feedback to update the school committee's work plan that will be used to monitor progress over the next five years. The entire goal and guardrail monitoring process will take place during public meetings of the school committee. And so here is what you can expect in the process. We will continue our listening sessions and then we will adopt a work plan for the school committee this spring. And we will also post a summary of this community input on our website. So you can see the feedback you provided and how we use the feedback in our decision-making. And again, if you have more to add, please complete the feedback form that's posted on our webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee. And we really, really appreciate your input. And thank you for taking time with us this evening, because we know it's school vacation for some, and you probably have dinnertime waiting with your children or children you're taking care of. So we do appreciate that. We tried to do many different times and options so we could capture as many people as possible. And so on behalf of the superintendent and the school committee and the entire BPS family, I want to thank you for your time. And I just want to ask Mr. Tran if he has any closing comments.
Again, I, I'm echoing Madame Chair Navila to convey our appreciation and and to all of you for, for your, for your attendance. And we will incorporate one way or another, all of your comments and, and concerns into our agenda for the next few meetings. Thank you and hope to see you again.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to the interpreters. Thank you to the BPS staff who are with us this evening. And thank you to the attendees again for being here. And then for those of you who I know are doing even more, you know, the Boston Schoolyard Initiative or Ms. Shakur with the OAG Task Force, that's a lot of work that's above and beyond. So we just want to say thank you. And we thank you for your partnership to make sure that our students, you know, are getting what they need or that you're always pushing to make sure our students get what they need. So again, thank you so much. And everyone, have a good night. We will see you all soon. Take good care.
Good night.
Good night. I hope you feel better, Mr. Tran.
Thank you.